If everyone could go ahead and turn on their mics. Robert Pope?
Present.
Bill Holland?
Present.
Jason Puckett?
Present.
Don Loudon?
Present.
Greg Zuzen?
Present.
Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? And if not, we'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda to include the check register for the June 12th, the May 22nd work session memorandum, the approval of minutes for the May 22nd meeting, and also the bond release for Project Winston-Saphora as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Julie, roll call, please.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Great. Next is the first of two public comment periods. The public may comment on items on the agenda that are not part of a public hearing or on a specific matter within the council's jurisdiction. If you do want to speak, you would come forward, make sure that the microphone is on, the green light would appear, state your name and your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. I will also remind everyone that this is not a public hearing, so it's a little different than Plan Commission meetings where this is your oppo-- if you have comments, this would be your opportunity to come forward and speak. There is not a follow-up question and answer or an opportunity to speak once the council has heard from the developer and then votes. With that said, if there's anyone that would like to come forward, please do so.
Microphone on. Okay. Good evening. My name is Nick Stephanie. Do you need the spelling of my name?
No.
Okay. And I serve as the President of the Groves at Beechwood Farms Homeowners Association. I'm here tonight to represent our HOA and speak on behalf of many of our homeowners who have expressed their concerns about the proposed rezoning of the Eaton property from C3 to R4. After speaking with many of our homeowners, I can confidently say that our community is not opposed to development of the Eaton property. In fact, we welcome responsible and thoughtful growth in our community. That said, we strongly believe the property should remain zoned as C3, a designation that was carefully determined during the creation of the Town of Avon's comprehensive plan and reflects the long-term vision for the area. The current rezoning request from David Weekly Homes would change that designation to R4 to allow for the construction of 76 single-family townhomes. According to their plan, the only access point for this development would be Beechwood Center Road. This road also serves as the main entrance to our neighborhood. No traffic study or supporting data has been provided to show that this narrow, two-lane residential road can safely or effectively handle the increased traffic from an additional 76 homes. Compounding the issue, the retail area just south of the proposed development has already seen significant growth with the recent opening of Chick-fil-A and the upcoming openings of L Emporium and other businesses. Even with the development already in place, our neighborhood is experiencing daily traffic congestion. The intersection at Beechwood Drive and Rockville Road frequently backs up in both directions, and Beechwood Center Road is under considerable strain. Adding more homes will only worsen this situation. Another concern we have is the potential for cut-through traffic. Homeowners fear that residents of the proposed townhomes may begin using our internal neighborhood roads to bypass the congested intersection and exit through Dan Jones Road or 10th Street. This would further disrupt safety and quality of life in our community. In October '22, a similar rezoning request for the Glen Rock Springs community from C3 to R3 was denied by the Town Council. That plan involved 32 detached, single-family rental homes, a far less dense proposal than what's being requested today. The council's decision then was guided by the five criteria for zoning amendments focusing heavily on alignment with the comprehensive plan, land use, and density. Comments related to density of the project were shared, noting a less dense proposal may be more favorably considered. This new request is even more dense than the prior. As the residents who would be most directly impacted, we respect the landowner's desire to sell and see the land developed. We simply ask that any development align with the town's existing zoning, its thoughtfully created comprehensive plan, and, most importantly, the current density guidelines. To our knowledge, there are no special circumstances that would justify a waiver to put this number of homes on this small piece of land. I've brought an image that directly compares the size of the Eaton lot to a nearly identical--
I'm sorry, Nick, your three minutes are up.
Okay. Am I able to give this illustration?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think this kind of helps put things into perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to come forward and speak?
Hi, my name's Brian Woodford. I'm also a resident grows of Beechwood Farms. Been there not quite since the houses were built and developed was new, but for about 14 years I've been living there on Chestnut Drive. And we all have concerns as homeowners in the neighborhood about what's being built around us and the development. I've lived in Hendricks County, mostly Avon, for about 30 years now, and we've all seen the growth that's been happening in the town, and a lot of it's very exciting. I think townhomes in a 10-acre parcel, 76 units, is a bit absurd. I think a townhome, I envision a townhome in a city environment where people can walk to shopping and restaurants and green space, parks, trail systems, kind of like what y'all have going on just down the road. I think it's that way, the 500 acres, the Riverwalk. That's where I envision this kind of project, not next to a residential area and behind commercial, rural King and a couple of restaurants that might be appealing to some, but maybe not to live there. I saw that, I was here for the zoning meeting, or one of them at least, and I believe the estimated price range in these homes, these townhouses, were from the 330s to, I thought, over 500. And just doing a quick Realtor.com search, seeing what's available, new market right now between Avon and Brownsburg, average price of condos, I think in the 1700, 1800 square foot range is around $280,000, and those are brand-new. There's over 105 residential developments, according to HomeSource and Zillow in Hendricks County alone. Don't quote me on that, that's just what I read. And I'm concerned about a lot of new development and our property values kind of dropping a little bit. The housing market seems to be a little bit slow right now, at least in my neighborhood. We've got four or five houses for sale, so I'm deeply concerned about the value of our beautiful neighborhood and putting townhomes in next to us. Where are they gonna go? Are they gonna walk our sidewalks? Which, we're a fine, we're a neighborly community, we're friendly, but it doesn't seem like that should be the appeal to put a new development in right there. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Poland. I'm at 7543 Basswood Drive, literally connecting to the retention pond up against the project in question here. And I know during the Planning Commission, the pond was a big topic of discussion. I won't rehash the traffic issue, although I do agree, I think it's gonna be a nightmare. However, I do want to address to the Avon Town Council that during that Planning Commission, it was addressed by that Planning Commission that that pond is out of code compliance. It has not been addressed by either the developer, the current owner, or the town of Plainfield. But Town of Avon. So I will say this, that if anything is going to be developed there, the town has addressed that that retention pond is a liability and a problem in going unaddressed. That if it does end up being developed into a massive residential area, if that does lead to excessive flooding, which has already been a problem, then I will personally, and I've already talked to my attorneys, kind of hold the Town of Avon liable at this point, as you have already decided that it is out of code compliance. So any redistricting, rezoning of that particular property, I think during the Planning Commission did say something about including the redredging, digging out, cleaning up of that retention pond and the subsequent pond behind Royal King in order to keep all of our houses from not being underwater. If that doesn't get part of this, then I just want to let the Town of Avon know that I'm putting you kind of on notice in a public forum that I'm gonna kind of hold you guys liable. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Oh, good evening. My name's Aaron Poland. I'm at 7543 Basswood Drive, literally connecting to the retention pond up against the project in question here. And I know during the Planning Commission, the pond was a big topic of discussion. I won't rehash the traffic issue, although I do agree, I think it's gonna be a nightmare. However, I do want to address to the Avon Town Council that during that Planning Commission, it was addressed by that Planning Commission that that pond is out of code compliance. It has not been addressed by either the developer, the current owner, or the town of Plainfield. Or Town of Avon, sorry, offices at Plainfield. But Town of Avon. So I will say this, that if anything is going to be developed there, the town has addressed that that retention pond is a liability and a problem in going unaddressed. That if it does end up being developed into a massive residential area, if that does lead to excessive flooding, which has already been a problem, then I will personally, and I've already talked to my attorneys, kind of hold the Town of Avon liable at this point, as you have already decided that it is out of code compliance. So any redistricting, rezoning of that particular property, I think during the Planning Commission did say something about including the redredging, digging out, cleaning up of that retention pond and the subsequent pond behind Royal King in order to keep all of our houses from not being underwater. If that doesn't get part of this, then I just want to let the Town of Avon know that I'm putting you kind of on notice in a public forum that I'm gonna kind of hold you guys liable. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else? With no one else coming forward, we'll go ahead and close the first public comment session and move on to department updates.
Steve Moore, Public Works Director. We're having our first pre-construction meeting with our CCMG contractor. That was the $3 million project that came in 20% under engineer's estimate. Pretty good stuff, got 18 roads we're gonna be doing. So that'll be starting here shortly. Hunter North and Raceway Road Roundabout is out for bid now. Bids will be accepted on June 17th. We're hoping for low bids there, too, because we did also get low bids on our roundabout at Anceline Way and 900. That was 19% below the engineer's estimate. So we're on a roll with low bids. Dan Jones Road, Phase 3, field check plans are done. Right-of-way acquisition is, I think, about done. Utility relocation is getting ready to go. Trees and stumps have been ground. Phase 4, we're still under design, kind of still scraping things out, trying to get utilities located. Having problems with 811. Everybody is right now, apparently. But we're trying to get our survey completed so we can continue with our design on that. The stormwater utility, we've done a really good job with collecting outstanding fees from people that didn't think that they lived in the Town of Avon. Now they know. And so we've got a lot of compliance there. Happy about that. Potholes, Eli used about 24 bags of cold patch in the last month. MS4 inspections, Drew and Eli completed 117 inspections last month without having to find anybody. Eli installed 41 street signs and traffic signs. And he also did, he and I and then he and Drew each installed a radar sign on 900 East. Those are for the future speed table that's gonna be there for the new park entrance, which that is part of the CCMG project. Betsy collected $6,000, a little bit over that, in permit fees for 11 permits. And she also collected $1,687 from accident reimbursements this last month. Any questions?
Don't think so. Thank you. Linda?
Linda Allbran, Planning Director. Start with the comp plan. We have a first draft. It was sent to the Steering Committee last Friday on the 6th. Once the Steering Committee takes a look at it and gets any comments back, we will have a public draft on June 27th. And then we are planning a public presentation of the comp plan at a special meeting of the Plan Commission on July 14th, which we have not put that out on social media yet, but that will be the date of the public presentation with adoption at a following Plan Commission meeting, potentially in August, and Town Council in September. There was no BCA meeting in May. There will be one in June for the Dutch Brothers Coffee. However, that will be continued again. We had some more discussions with Lowe's this week, which have not turned out as fruitful as we had hoped, so we're gonna continue those discussions. But right now, it doesn't look great for what we're going to be able to accomplish with that development. The May Plan Commission had the Beechwood Townhomes that you're gonna hear later tonight, the preliminary plat for the Briarwood Development, and the Community Center for the Silver Springs Development on 900. In June, we'll be hearing the Ray Skelman Mazda dealership, DPR, the preliminary plat for Whispering Pines, and then a minor plat for the Hendricks Bank up on the corner of Avon Avenue 100 North. If you get any questions about Whispering Pines, their signs have just gone up for the plat, and we're getting lots of questions here that the sign, more signs have gone up, what's going on now? And so if you just want to let everybody know, if you get questions, that it's just for the plat of what was already approved, and they're not asking for any changes. And I just wanted to bring you up to date on Beast City USA. The Girl Scouts planted the first pollinator garden up at the community garden, and they are maintaining it. My daughter will be here in the morning, actually, to weed it tomorrow. We attended the first farmer's market and handed out pollinator seed packets to residents, along with a pamphlet of what we're doing and why we're trying to do it. And we had a lot of positive feedback from the folks we talked to at that event. And we also plan to be here at Night at the Park on the 3rd to hand out some more of them. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. Sean Stoops, Chief of Police. Our hiring process is moving forward. We hired one officer at the end of May for one of our six vacancies. We just hired two more off of this hiring list, and they'll be starting very soon. And that's gonna leave us with three vacancies still, and we're down to our last two applicants on this hiring list. And our background investigators are trying to work through those to see if either of those are gonna qualify for either of any of those additional three spots that we have left open. We want to congratulate Officer Sean Diebold on his promotion to Merritt Sergeant. At the last Mayor Board meeting, the Mayor Board certified Sergeant Diebold's promotion. Sergeant Diebold had to go through a pretty competitive process and managed to finish high up on the list and received staff's recommendation. They went to the Mayor Board, and then they voted to accept that recommendation, so congratulations to him. We have a current lieutenant promotion process also underway, and we hope to have that completed by the end of July as well. Our command staff met this week, and have already began our budget planning process for 2026. We also had a chance to meet with Ryan and get some updates to try to help guide us in that process for next year as well. Several of our officers attended the Law Enforcement Memorial Conference last month at Washington, DC. This was an honor for our officers to participate in that week, in that ceremony, honoring the officers that have paid the ultimate sacrifice for their community and their country. And they also got to share that experience with some of our partners in Hendricks County Law Enforcement, as well as they honored the late Fred Fizzler in his memorial there as well. And finally, just as a reminder, National Night Out is on July 24th at the Avon High School. Most of our vendor spots have been filled, but we still have a few left. So if you're still interested in being a vendor, go to the town's website. You can sign up for that. You can call our police department directly. If you'd like to be a donor, we would love to take your money. If you want to volunteer, we would love to have you come down and cook funnel cakes or hot dogs. So, and if none of those things appeal to you, we'd still like to see you there on the event and just participate in a really great community activity, meet the officers, and just have a great time. And it's 100% free, so come on down and get a hot dog and a funnel cake. In your packet, you have all of the May's activity. I think everything was pretty much mostly on average as far as statistics go, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have from any of that data. Thank you.
Don't think so. Thank you, Sean. Julie, do you have anything to?
Not today.
Okay, moving on to council comment and liaison reports. We'll go ahead and start with you, Bill.
I have no comments.
Thank you. Greg?
I attended Sergeant Diebold's promotion ceremony on the 27th. On the 27th, we also had a Plan Commission. As Linda indicated, we approved the Briarwood Preliminary Plat, we approved the Silver Springs Menity Center. And then on the agenda tonight, there was a 5-2 unfavorable recommendation for Beechwood Farms. I'm sorry, Beechwood Townhomes. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Nothing for me tonight.
Robert?
School board meeting on Monday was livestreamed for the first time. But of course, you guys have all heard, during the meeting, they just got the options regarding the upcoming school referendum vote, possibly as soon as this November. And then earlier this evening, while we, I was unable to attend, but while we were in our work sessions, the Stormwater Board was able to meet and, correct me if I'm wrong, approved the bid for the roundabout, their portion of the roundabout. That's all I got.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, utility relocation agreement with Citizens Water for County Road 100 and Raceway.
I'll start it out, and if you guys have questions, Steve can help me out as well. But as you guys are aware, we're moving forward with the construction of a roundabout at 100 North and Raceway Road. When utilities have purchased easements and need to relocate as a result of those projects, those reimbursement costs are reimbursable. So on that project, Citizens Water does have an easement and has to relocate from it. They've provided us their estimated cost as $81,400. This is a standard utility relocation agreement. The one thing I will point out, I always tell you guys these when we do utility relocations, it's an estimated cost, and so if the cost is less, we pay them less. If it's more, we pay them more. It's their actual expenses to relocate. They do have to provide us documentation to justify whatever they get paid. And that's what the agreement says, and then we'll pay them what it is, but their estimate is 81,400. I'll tell you, typically, citizens tends to be a little bit higher, so some of you may remember calling the, actually, RDC would know this, but on Dan Jones Road, we had some reimbursables that ended up coming in about $200,000 less than what we did, so that's good, or hopefully positive. The water company has a lot, they have about $1 million of relocations for this project, but only $81,400 of it is actually reimbursable. The rest of it's actually in the right-of-way. So happy to answer any questions. I did provide a copy of the sources and uses for the project. We are using, if you guys recall, we did the general obligation bond last year, which is to pay for these portion of both of these projects that you're talking about, the next one that you're gonna award as well. And so this would be paid from out of that geo-pond.
Mr. Taylor, you've read this agreement?
Yes, and I agree with Mr. Cannon. It's a fairly standard agreement. And because of the, it's an obligation to reimburse, not an obligation to pay of some sort, and so any motion would simply be to approve the agreement.
Ryan, did we have an estimated amount that we thought this was gonna cost? Is this in the ballpark here?
We didn't know at the time. Sometimes when we start these projects, we don't know if utilities actually exist. So until we do the survey, until we do title research and actually get into the right-of-way, we don't actually find sometimes that utilities actually have easements. Sometimes they'll pull them out from, like, hey, we found this one from 1963. So we, this one, we were not anticipating, so this is a cost we weren't anticipating. Luckily, it's small. Sometimes we see million-dollar relocations, and so this one's relatively small. So we think we can still, again, Steve, we're hopeful we'll get good bids and that the overall project costs can end up being less to cover the difference.
Okay. If the amount is more than the $81,400 that we may approve now, do you have to come back to get that approved?
Well, again, I think the way to handle it is to, it's an agreement. The law says that we have to reimburse citizens for their actual cost. So the $81,400 is an estimate that the two parties have put together for now, but the agreement would be able, is to reimburse them for their actual cost. Now, the town will vet those claimed expenses and make sure they appear to be reasonable, given our experience in this area. And we could have conversations with them if we think they're claiming an expense that is not compensable under the statute, but the statute controls this. So this is, we enter these agreements because otherwise, they won't move. And so we have to reassure them contractually that we will reimburse them. So again, I would make a motion to approve the agreement, period, without saying anything further. Or you can move to deny it. Again, that'll create different issues, but instead of treating it as a contract for that $81,400 estimate, I would avoid any reference to what amount you're authorizing to be paid. You're just approving the agreement.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the utility relocation agreement with Citizens Water for County Road 100 North and Raceway Road as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Julie, roll call, please.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Next is a ward bid for Charles Nelson Drive and 900 East Roundabout.
I'll do this as well, but I'll invite Steve up if you guys have any questions. This is a, it's a little unique that we've really-- This is a, it's a little unique that we've really, in order to be able to fund this project, we had to find four different sources to pay for it. So as Robert reported earlier, the Stormwater Board is helping pay for the drainage improvements that are necessary for the project. A portion of it's also being paid from added, a portion of it's also being paid from the road bond. And then this will actually go to the RDC as well, since they're going to pay for a portion of it from TIF funds. However, Crossroads Engineering did the design. We did put it out for bid. We received five, as Steve reported in his report, very competitive bids. You know, not, you know, 40 to $100,000 spread. Howard Company was the low bidder. Their low bid was $1,539,111,38. Howard Company hasn't done a roundabout project like this for us recently. They're a relatively large company in the Indianapolis area. They've been doing our crack ceiling project for us. They've probably done it 16 out of the last 20 years. You may know their name better as Effie Harding. They just renamed themselves. So they've been doing paving at the high school. They actually did all the paving at the middle school. So again, they're a very reputable company, not necessarily having worked for the town quite a bit. I know they've worked for, Steve has worked capable of doing the project. And so it is our recommendation that you guys award the bid to the Howard Company. And Steve and I are happy to answer your questions.
Questions or discussion?
And Steve mentioned that this came in below our estimate.
Yeah, I believe Steve said it was about 19,000 or 19% under. I think the engineer's estimate was a little, was right at about $2 million. So yeah, it's pretty substantially under what we expected. I will also, Greg, I'm going to say it before you ask me. One of the things that is included in this project is not just the roundabout itself. There's actually improvements all the way to the south to US 36. And so we're putting in a dual left turn lane and we're improving that area of County Road 900. I know you guys have had several citizens who've come up during previous rezonings who've complained about the traffic on 900. There are improvements to address some of those things as well, in addition to just the roundabout construction, so.
What about the right turn lane and the straight through lane?
In the right turn lane and the through. So yeah, it'll actually have additional capacity at that intersection to deal with some of the congestion issues that you guys have heard about in that area. We knew this was coming. It just was taking time for us to get there.
If there's no other comments or questions, we'll entertain a bid or a motion.
I make a motion that we award the bid for the Charles Nelson Parkway and 900 East Roundabout to Howard Company in an amount not to exceed $1,539,111,38.
Second.
Julie, roll call, please.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Next is tax abatements. The 2025 compliance forms, we have two. Are we going to discuss them individually, starting with Rise?
Yes, I can do it however you guys would like to do it. These are the last two. I know you guys have had these on the previous two agendas, so you're relatively familiar with this. These are tax abatements that the town council has previously approved. Every year, anyone who is approved for a tax abatement is required to file these compliance forms and show you how they met what they committed to the town council as a result of those tax abatements. The first one, actually, I think on the agenda, they're backwards, so I apologize for that. I'm going to go off of the online one, which is, the first one is Harland Bakeries. Harland Bakeries, we gave a personal property tax abatement for the equipment. They did some remodeling and expansion of their existing facility. If you guys aren't aware with Harland Bakeries, it's one of the largest employers in Avon and produces bagels and other baked goods located off of Production Drive. And the town council did pass a personal property tax abatement for 10 years. They've given you a copy of their investment. They exceeded their investment commitment. They have not met their employment commitment, but they did put a paragraph in there for you guys. And for those of you who've been around for a few years, they've had this ongoing issue. Even though they haven't met the number of jobs, they have substantially exceeded what they committed in terms of overall payroll. They have 200 vacancies. They are trying to fill those vacancies and they cannot get people to fill those jobs. So that's why they haven't been able to meet it. It's not because they're not trying. And again, I think our opinion, John Taylor and mine, is they are still in substantial compliance and we would recommend approval. Jason, I apologize. I know you asked for a copy of the SB 1. This was done so long ago that the town, I didn't have one in my file, so.
Oh, I thought I saw one further down.
There is an SB 1, but that's for the Rise project, not for the Harland Bakeries one. So I apologize. I don't, there's not a digital version of it and I couldn't find a paper copy either, so. I'm happy to answer your questions. Do you guys want me to do the Rise one as well?
You've got it on page four. Page four, your PDF.
Sorry, say again?
You've got it on there.
Oh, in the actual, with the, gotcha. Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. See, look, I'm great.
Yeah, you're doing great. You're doing great.
Really good at my job.
What year? This was from 2014. Is this the last year then?
Yes, Greg, I did look into that. It looks like the improvements came online in 2017, even though they were approved in 14. So we believe it's, this is actually in year eight. So you could potentially have two more years of this abatement.
So is there a schedule then that shows what the abatement is, I mean, percentage wise? So what are, I mean, at the end of the day, if this is the eighth year, are we only abating 20%?
I'm looking, that's normally in the SB 1, so give me a second. I'm looking, Greg. Yeah, year eight is a 30% deduction. Year nine is 20 and year 10 is 10.
And I'm fine with approving it even though the employment hasn't gone up because I know they've had struggles and they've tried a lot of things to do this. But at the same time, as you've indicated, their improvements are a lot more money than what we had thought. So I think it's a win-win for everybody.
Is that a motion?
Any other questions? If not, a motion. Greg?
I make a motion that we approve the 2025 Form CF1 Harland tax abatement as presented.
A second.
Thank you. Julie, roll call, please.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Next is the same thing for Rise.
Yeah, so the Rise project, similarly, this is a relative, a newer abatement. Rise is the development on Ronald Reagan Parkway. It's just north of County Road 200 South on the right side. If you guys recall, this was, they're proposing to build 20 buildings of co-warehousing and business advancement. They have only done this in phases, so you will notice they have not met their investment goals, but that's because they've only done phase one. They have not built 20 buildings. Again, John and I had some discussion about this. And although they didn't meet your investment threshold, really, they're losing out on the abatement because they're in their highest years of what abatement they would get. So they're actually, this is to our benefit in terms of the abatement. We still believe eventually they'll build those pieces. So we still believe they're still in substantial compliance. John is trying to follow up with them to find out when they plan to do phase two. We understand they're relatively full, so it may just be waiting for better economic conditions. But we would still recommend that this is in substantial compliance and that you approve their continued tax abatement.
Ryan, do they have any employees and salaries yet, or is this still just dummy data?
They are showing that it's created 550 jobs. They didn't provide anything to substantiate that. It's also shown a salaries of $19,52700.
Well, the reason I'm questioning it is because above that, they say.
Yeah, they have a 117.
And the 3.8, and if you add those together, it's exactly what they've estimated on their SB 1. I find it hard to believe that it would be right on the penny.
Yeah.
So I'm guessing they've just filled this in.
I'm, I think you're correct.
Okay.
We could ask them to attend a meeting and verify that for you if you guys want, but that's at your guys' discretion.
Well, but those employees are the employees of all the tenants in their buildings. So if there could be 20 tenants, divide that by 117. I mean, it's really.
I don't think that they have any of these.
I never figured out how they could say that anyhow when they brought this to us the first time.
Sure.
I remember that was.
Differentally than the other one, they've already started making their improvement. So the meter has started running versus the other one. They didn't start it for two or three years later.
Exactly. And that's why I would say they are missing out. So their years of 100% abatement, they're only getting it on a lower assessed value. So what you guys approved as an abatement, they will actually get less of an abatement than what you actually approved.
So I wanted to ask about that too, because from my time working in the auditor's office, when it was a partial assessment like this, we would apply the full amount of the abatement to the portion of the property that was built the second year. Is that, you might check and make sure that's not how that's happening. Because they should, I believe, still get the full amount of the abatement that we granted them. It'll just be, the abatement will also be in phases.
Oh, the abatement will be in phases as well?
Correct.
Okay. I'll have to check with the auditor on that.
I remember the number of employees was a warning from us to them that the number seemed incredibly overzealous. Do you guys still find that even in the phases that they're coming in, that they are still in substantial compliance with this low of a employee turnout?
I think being that it's phased and it's still early in the process and early in the abatement, I think it's okay, but I think it's worthy of your continuing to monitor.
I don't know if I'm comfortable with a lack of understanding the actual abatement amount that might be applied at a later time with your experience in the auditor's office. When's the due date on this? And if so, I'd be willing to make a motion to put this off to another meeting until we can get these answered.
It's technically supposed to be June 15th, but they turned it in late. So I don't, I think if it's late, it's late. Jason, maybe better to answer if it's.
This is for next year's bill?
Correct, yeah.
Surely we could get it.
I would say, I don't think it'd be a big deal.
Yeah, I'd like to talk to them, I guess.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to that then to? I definitely don't want to deny it, but I am not willing to move it forward.
I just, I just think that I would have a motion to table it to your next meeting, be specific about your next meeting or whenever you want to have it. And then, but it's on your agenda to be considered, so the public should know when you're going to talk about it.
Roger that. I move that we table the Rise CF1, 2025 Form CF1 for Rise until our next meeting or is prudent to council president's agenda scheduling.
Could I, might you consider just saying the next meeting? And you can always table it again, but your motion would not give, in my opinion, would not give notice to the public as to when you're going to vote on it.
Okay. I'll amend that. I move we table item 2025 Form CF1 for Rise until our next meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Julie, roll call, please.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
My question is, who's going to talk to him? Are you talking to him or is John Taylor talking to him or?
Yeah, John, we'll have John do it. I may reach out to the auditor because I'm curious about that myself. But I'll have John talk to Rise and make sure, we'll ask them to attend the next meeting.
Next is Resolution 2025-19, the RDC determination of no excess AV.
Each year, your redevelopment commission is required by law to report to you whether they have uncommitted funds or excess AV, which could be passed along to other taxing districts. And so consistent with past years, your RDC has determined that all of its expected revenue from the incremental tax increment districts is committed and needed for its projects. And so this resolution merely is your acknowledgement that you've received that. You don't technically have to affirm it or approve it. It's, that's what the resolution says. Really, you're just accepting that you've been advised. There are some circumstances where if they've accumulated a certain amount of money, they have to get your affirmance, but they're not anywhere near that. So really, this is just, we'd like you to prove it, to make a record that you've been made aware of that. And this has to, has to be done by June 15th, so it's important that we do that. As you know, your RDC has been very busy over the years with projects and have some big projects going on, so it's not surprising. And this is what you usually see every year.
Any questions?
How many years into this project are we, Ryan?
Yeah, this isn't a single project. This is all the projects. So this is all of our TIF districts. So it's the Ronald Reagan Parkway EDA, the Ronald Reagan South EDA, the Hendrick Regional Health RDA, and the Avon EDA. And so there's tons of different projects in all of the, in all that, those different areas.
Do we hear a motion?
So just to clarify, Dan, I'm making a motion that we've seen this, not necessarily a motion that we approve it?
I think you could, the way it's formatted, I think I would just make a motion to approve the resolution. And the resolution speaks for itself. And as to your last question, what the RDC is really saying is that either they have already committed their RDA, existing RDC revenues with debt or bonds, or they plan to, in that there's no excess money available that they do not anticipate will be used by projects. That's what this is really all about.
Sure. I just assumed that at a certain point, we'll hopefully have some excess funds to pass back. So I just was curious where we were at and how far along we were.
Yeah, the RDC does have a long-range plan and you could take a look at that and see when there is that tipping point perhaps. But as you know, you hear a lot about traffic. So a big part of the view of that long-term capital plan is that there's a lot, there are a lot of projects in the queue for a long time to deal with those issues and others.
Sure, thank you. I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2025-19 for the RDC determination of no excess AV as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Julie.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Next is ordinance 2025-21ZA25-02 Beechwood Town Homes. Linda?
Good evening, council. This is a request by David Weekly Holmes to rezone 10 acres, a little over 10 acres, from the C3 district to the R4 district for 76 lot townhome development. The C3 district is listed as transitional office. And I just want to make sure you're aware that the C3 does not just permit offices. It's also permits retail, basic retail, restaurants, that sort of thing. Just so you're, you know that by the name of it, it's not just office uses. The Plan Commission heard this on May 27th and forwarded an unfavorable recommendation to you by a vote of five to two. The commission spent a long time discussing wording of commitments and, from my recollection, did not provide a lot of guidance to you as to the reasoning for the denial recommendation or the unfavorable recommendation regarding the zoning criteria. My best recollection of the reasoning for the denial or the unfavorable recommendation was traffic and density. The staff report, I hope, was provided to you. Staff at the Plan Commission meeting and continues now to recommend approval of the development. I want to touch on a few things. The 2017 current conference of plan recommends innovation uses for this proposal or for this area. The innovation bubble in the conference of plan takes in the entirety of the shopping center south of this site and then kind of goes north into this site. And the reasoning for that. And the reasoning for that recommendation, as best as I can figure it out from the 2017 plan, was that the commercial center that Royal King is now had two universities in it. So it had Ivy Tech and another one. And that they, there was hope that that become spur some innovation and some educational uses and that might come up into this area. Obviously, both of those universities are gone now and Royal King has taken the largest spot. And most or not all of the other tenant spaces are taken in that retail and it's back to basically a general retail development. Based on the reading of the comprehensive plan, though, this area was designated as to be a buffer, to be a buffer between the single family residential to the north and to the west and then the retail to the south. Buffer uses in comprehensive plans and in zoning don't just take the form of one use. It could be office, it could be a church, it could be a school, and it also could be residential. And from a staff's point of view, a good buffer between retail, large scale retail and single family development, town homes meets that buffer intent of that comprehensive plan. I'd like to touch on the five zoning criteria that were listed in the staff report and presented to the Plan Commission as to the staff's opinion as to why the five criteria have been met. Again, the five criteria are taken in their totality and they don't have to meet every one specifically, but as a whole, generally, you believe that they have been met for when looking at a rezoning petition before you. The number one is comprehensive plan. Obviously, I've already touched on that. I believe the comprehensive plan is out of date. And also, the comprehensive plan was envisioning a buffer use. We believe that the proposed development is a buffer use. Criteria two is the current conditions and character of the current structures in each district. Placing residential in between residential and retail and a residential style and look of a development, we believe, would meet the character of the structures in the area. Criterion three is the most desirable use for which the land in each zoning district is adapted. Because this would again be a buffer use, we believe this would be a desirable use for the land for this zoning district in this area. Criteria four is the conservation of property values throughout the jurisdiction. We have no reason to believe that a town home development on this property would affect property values throughout the town. And then responsible growth and development, given the need for a buffer use between the the uses, we believe this would be responsible growth and development. We do want to touch a little bit on the traffic and density issues that have been brought up. Generally, residential development has less traffic than commercial development. So regardless of what develops on this property, the amount of traffic coming in and out of it is going to be there. It's it's going to affect Beachwood Center Drive. Whether it's this residential development or an office development or a church or something like that, it's still going to have impact on Beachwood Center Road. And in general, residential has less traffic impact than commercial traffic. A traffic study has not been done for this. The petitioner has agreed to do a traffic study with the preliminary plat when that would come in after this, but it is not required at this time. It wouldn't be required with the plat either, but they have committed to that. The staff recommendation to the Plan Commission was to prohibit some uses on the site, and those were apartment building small and apartment building large. We thought the site was not appropriate for for the number of units that apartment building could bring. So we requested those be eliminated. And then in their discussions, the Plan Commission talked about eliminating additional uses, which obviously didn't get put into their motion because it was not, because it was an unfavorable motion. But those included cemetery, recycling facility, hospital, utility, mass transit facility, live work units, upper story residential. They also wanted the proposed emergency access that you'll hear about from the petitioner included in the plat as a requirement and the traffic study be required as the preliminary plat. And then finally, they did add that they wanted covenants for the units that no parking be allowed on Beachwood Center Drive. So again, with that, the Plan Commission recommended or forwarded an unfavorable recommendation to you. Planning staff continues to recommend approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. The petitioner is here and is prepared to make a presentation.
Linda, I didn't hear anything about a commitment about the pond. Was that something that you had any information for us on?
So the pond itself is not part of the legal description of this rezoning. The petitioner will talk to you a lot about the pond, I believe, and is willing to tell you what they're willing to do as part of the development. But as far as the rezoning goes, it is not part of this property. They have rights to utilize the pond and that would have to be addressed during plating when the drainage is reviewed by our engineers.
Linda, you indicated our current plan is dated and we are in the process of a new comprehensive plan. And the new plan that hasn't been approved but is being talked about, what is this area? What, how do we have that area zoned in the new new comp plan?
I don't have the exact wording with me. I should have brought that with me. I believe, Steve, you brought that or did you? It's a, I believe it is a multifamily. I don't have the exact wording with me.
Thank you.
So why, why, why don't we have a traffic study now? What, we have to approve it and then get a traffic study and then?
So traffic studies in our ordinance are only required when we hit 150 units. So this wouldn't normally qualify for a traffic study anyway. We can request one at plating, but it's not, again, not a requirement and the petitioner doesn't have to do that. We're asking for it now at the zoning stage to be completed at the plating stage. The traffic study would tell us where the problem points are. We, our DPW director helps them come up with the scope of what intersections they wanted to look at. And then the traffic study says what improvements need to be done to those intersections in order for this development to be successful. So it's not, the traffic study is going to say, no, this shouldn't go here. It will say more of this intersection needs an extra turn lane or something like.
But how do we get that accomplished if that's what it says?
So the, oh, you mean the, what the traffic study comes up with? That would be required that they either do the improvements or pay the town for the improvements that come out of the traffic study.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, so that's part of that commitment as well? They'll do a traffic study and then reimburse us or pay for that?
Whatever comes out of the traffic study, whatever improvements are recommended by the traffic study, we would require them to do it or to pay the town for those.
Lyndy, two major questions. One, you talked about a list of commitments that were talked about during the planning commission. I'm looking through my documents. I don't have anything to describe those. Do you have something that we can see in front of us so we can, at a minimum, make sure that they're discussed and on the record for 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 where this potentially could go? That's one. The other one is, I believe there are some, traffic obviously was a major concern. And I believe there are some planned, I'm kind of looking at you too, Steve, some planned traffic pattern changes for, I don't know if it's Beachwood Center Drive or Beachwood Center Drive and 36. He's coming up here. Can you talk to that?
Steve Moore, Public Works Director. Yes, we had a traffic study done for that intersection at US 36. And the configuration is going to be changing from the, to a dedicated left turn in both north and southbound directions within a shared right and and through motions. We're just shifting things over. It's in front of NDOT right now for approval. And then when NDOT approves it, we'll be changing that. So that'll make that intersection flow a little better and be a little safer. Yeah, back to the actual traffic study, again, with under 150 units. It's not really required. What we do, and Linda, I think, explained it, but I'll rephrase it. We use it for impact. We just want to know how we're impacting any adjacent intersections, seeing if we do need any other improvements. And then we take the amount that they impact that intersection times the cost of the improvement and they have to pay that amount in an infrastructure contribution. So it's not like they're going to have to pay for a whole new intersection or a whole new turn lane. They'll be, they'll pay a portion of something because they're not impacting it completely. If they were, then they'd have to pay for the whole thing, but that's not going to be the case. This is, this is, you know, I wouldn't say nominal, but it's not very impactful. I don't see a lot of infrastructure contribution coming our way from 100, less than 150 units. Yeah, I don't see anything major here.
Got a follow up question. If I'm understanding you correctly, it sounds like improvements are already on their way. If NDOT does approve this regardless of how this rezone goes.
Yeah, this is, this is a whole, whole separate, whole separate issue. Yeah, they would just benefit from this. The project that we have planned would be a benefit and would help improve it regardless of whether they come or not.
That's all right. Thanks, Steve.
I have a question. Greg, I don't know whether you want to answer this or not. I'm not sure because I, unfortunately, I didn't get to go to that meeting. But what was the planning commission's concerns?
Well, I think there were a number of concerns. Obviously, it was a detention pond. And I think Mr. Poland may have been a speaker. He's affected by that detention pond whenever it, whenever it rains. My question to to maybe Mr. Moore is, we had a similar issue with detention pond in Cobblestone Springs. Did we not? And we made the improvements to that. If the town, and then again, this was part of that parcel of land that the county owns from a tax sale basis that nobody, nobody bid on. So the county still owns it or or how did that work?
Yeah, it's actually owned, the property is owned by Trinity Homes LLC. And it's just nobody's paid taxes on it. Correct. And so it was offered, if you can recall, it was offered to us in the sheriff's sale.
Right.
And we said no. And so it's still just continued to be owned by basically no one.
But my question is, if if the town, it's it's a piece of property that nobody owns or wants to take ownership of, but it affects other properties that are within the town of Avon. So if we were going to fix that, is this something that we would look through from our drainage board?
The stormwater board, we would, we could do a study to determine if the ponds are staging. If they're staging, why are they staging? Is it a, is it a pipe problem? Is it pipe sizes, discharge rates? You know, we would have a study done. I can't tell you from, you know, just standing here, what's wrong with that pond. I have no idea. I haven't studied, haven't looked at it, weren't even aware of it. So the answer is, yeah, now that I've heard this, I'm going to look into it and see if we can't have a study done, see if we're somehow impacting that. But if we do, we'll, we'll do a project and that's what stormwater money is for.
Thank you.
But the, but the, but the, this, I would encourage you to think about it this way is that the pond is not part of this petition. It's a completely different issue and the town is not the owner of that detention pond. We may have regulatory authority over it. It isn't true that no one owns it. There is an entity which owns it. The county commissioners, if it's gone through two tax sales, may have a certificate for the property. That certificate, they could request a tax deed or they could offer it to you formally, must that much like they did DKT recently. There's a whole process about that. But in terms of of what, there may be room for discussion about what you believe the town should do about that. That's a separate issue altogether. And on this particular matter, whatever is done on this property, if there's an approval or not, whatever's done in terms of stormwater, you have a separate ordinance that handles that. And you know that whatever happens there can not increase runoff or the flow or the speed of flow. It cannot have impacts to neighboring properties. I would caution the council from merging these two issues because they, that will just really confuse the actual issue in front of you. There may be things you need to do to address that detention pond from a regulatory authority per, you know, but not from a rezone. The rezone has to stand on its own. And there may be, you know, you have a staff, original staff recommendation in favor. You have a Plan Commission 52 recommendation against. We're talking about land use. And if that, whatever you decide, if you, if you decline, then we're right back, it has the land usage that it has now, no change. If it is approved, it's rezoned. Neither action changes the obligations of the owner or development of the land that's in front of you and what they need to do about stormwater. It's, it doesn't change it at all. We have separate ordinances about that. Nothing you say can increase the regulation on stormwater or decrease it for that matter. And so I would caution you and say, I think you have to deal with the application that's in front of you. And if you want staff to report back to you later about what the heck is going on to the west, then let them, but that's a different issue for a different time. And I think if you confuse them, you could, you know, just, I just don't think you want to do that in any way, shape or form. Let the petition stand on its own and not, I wouldn't put these two issues together. They are not the same issue and they shouldn't be considered together at all, in my opinion. And and again, you've got a mixed recommendation from you because your staff feels one way and your plan commission felt quite the other. And now it's here for you and the decision is about land use. Design of the land, if it is to be developed, comes later. That's a different issue altogether. And and compliance with our stormwater ordinance is not voluntary. It's, it's your law. They have to comply with it. And that's one of the things your stormwater consulting, consulting engineer said at the Plan Commission meeting is why don't we make them follow your ordinance and not? He didn't want the Plan Commission to design whatever was going to happen. You already have ordinances for that. Let that work.
Dan, I think the reason it came up, I don't know, or they've actually, the petitioner, has made a claim here of potentially paying $150,000 to improve that pond as part of their petition. I guess that's why I'm guessing it's being discussed by other members of the council.
Well, even part of the rezoning and by rezoning it, to build these townhomes on it, their drainage will go into that pond from that development though, correct?
They may or may not, but that, your rezone approval is land use and that is a design, development design decision that we reviewed by the Plan Commission in a whole different sort of setting. And I mean, they, they could design the drainage to go that way or to be handled on the site or in conjunction with other sites. I just think we're, I just think we're getting way ahead of ourselves. And if there's a denial, then I makes, if, you know, if the town council goes along with the Plan Commission, then one wonders why are we even talking about it at all? Because we're talking about how it will be developed when it won't be developed this way. But if you are thinking about it, again, the petitioner has the right to say, I want to be heard on land use and I want to rezone it and I want you to make a decision about that. And if you approve it, they have 18 steps left on the design of it and they have to comply with their ordinances. And I just think it's, I just think that I would try to deal with one thing at a time. And I don't think that if if the petitioner tells you that they are going to manage their drainings by something offsite, I mean, they don't have to. That's a design development. You're, you're just talking about land use. So you heard things about density, you heard things about traffic, you heard things about the five criteria, but you will note that they are not required to show you their design for their drainage, just like they're not required to show you a lot of things at this stage of the process. Comes with plating and development plan stages. And again, I just would, I don't, I think we have to look at the five factors and try to stick with the land use issue. And again, I think you can watch that Plan Commission meeting and see that discussion was all over the place. And again, you've had some talk about your five criteria and I think that's what you should stick with. Where that takes you is up to you, but. Where that takes you is up to you, but you have those five criteria. But we're really starting to talk about stormwater design, which is really not where we're at.
I hear that. But when I when I look at the information in front of me, the math doesn't appear to work to me that they can do what you're suggesting on their own property with 76 townhomes. I understand that's not my not my call and that that's later on down the road.
Well, just a reminder that the 76 townhomes is their conceptual plan, right? So they would not be bound to that exactly unless you said they were. Remember, this is land use. So they've shown you their concept plan. That that's not an assurance that's what it's going to look like.
And so let's just for the sake of argument, the what ifs, it can't be planned out to where they're profitable and we have already rezoned it. You know, it's kind of darned if you do, darned if you don't. So how do you, you know, I assume then that we could go back and change it back to commercial if they decide that's not what they're going to do.
Well, I don't recommend that either. I think you have to make the decision what you think the land use should be on that side. I just think again, when someone comes in and asks for a rezone, and this is one of the reasons your planner is suggesting that if you were to approve that you would take a hard look at all the uses that are authorized in this in this district that's being requested and you limit them, it's because they could do any of those things. And again, I don't want you to follow the picture that's created and think that's what it's going to be because that's not what rezoning is about. That's that's a whole different thing. And so I think you have to be cautious about it. But again, if we're if we're focusing on stormwater, how that will be managed, I think we're look, we need to look at those five criteria and say, look, how will a change in this zoning from C three to the requested designation? What does that look like? And how does that affect? How does that affect property values? How does that affect the character and of the of the area? Is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? Is it going to have a negative impact on responsible growth and development, impact on schools, traffic, whatever? You know, the law tells you what those factors are. You should look at those things and then only if you were inclined to grant the ordinance, would you then need to look at, are there uses that are allowed in the new district that we definitely don't want? And then you would cut those out. These are all land use conversations. And if you want to say, you know, the only way we're going to prove this is if there's a limit of X number of units and it has to look substantially like what is shown to us, you can do that as a condition of your approval, you can do those things. But again, I think you should just if you're when you when you make those considerations, you should be focusing on the five criteria for a rezone. And I just think if you're getting into too much detail on stormwater, you're looking at the wrong thing. Number one, you're looking at land that's not involved. And thirdly, you're you're doing exactly what your stormwater consultant has asked the plan commission not to do because you already have an ordinance that establishes standards for the design.
So that brings me back to why the negative vote on the planning commission, do you think?
Well, yeah, I didn't there was I was one of seven, so I don't know. But I mean, my notes I have is the there's anything over 49 lots, we need two exits, egress, ingress. We have one and we have a trail that will be used as an emergency access. I have density. We have private roads within a public development that they'll take care of the private roads, but to me, I think that that's an issue. The parking is an issue, I think is an issue. I'm not sure. I mean, we can pass any ordinance we want to restrict parking on any of our streets, but to pass an ordinance to restrict parking on Beechwood Drive because of this development, I don't think is the right thing to do. So, you know, those are some of the notes that I've made. And like anything else, when we rezone this and this petitioner walks away, it's still rezoned. And and I've always said, the rezone should only be for that particular petitioner. And if that doesn't work, it goes back to what it was and lets somebody else come forward and create their rezoning request. Because anybody can then step into their shoes because they have the zoning and redo whatever and our four zoning allows them to do.
Linda, what's the maximum density for R four?
I don't have my ordinance with me. Go find that if you need. Ten per acre.
So then in theory, we could approve this and they could end up putting 100 lots, 100 units on there?
Well, they still have to get streets and drainage and it has to lay out and the property is, you know, only so big.
Can I sort of follow up to that? Why R four instead of R three? And I and I asked that in the in their slides presentation, sure, the neighborhood to the west is zoned R three, but that was under our prior tour UDO and R three has now changed. What why why R four? Why was R four the decided transition versus?
The width of the lots for the townhomes.
Okay.
Why don't we look to petitioner? There it is. Ask those questions.
I'm happy to hear from the petitioner. Thank you, Linda.
My name is David Ellis. I'm the land acquisition manager at David Weekly Homes. We're located at 9310 North Meridian Streets, Suite 100 in Indianapolis. I promise I'm not going to read everything in the presentation. I just have the information there. Be happy to answer questions at the end. I also acknowledge that I am not smart enough to integrate whatever Mr. Taylor was saying in to my presentation, so I'm going to just show you what I have. And then feel free to interrupt me if you would like, or again, I'll answer any questions you have at the end. So we'll quickly blow through the commercial for David Weekly. We're a great company. We're in 19 markets. We came to Indy in 2011. We're known for high quality homes and great customer service. Our average home price this year is $675,000, but they often exceed $1 million. This is a single detached detached, single family home, which is our basically our bread and butter. And here's just some basic details about the Indy market and some of our community partners because we do put our money where our mouth is, so to speak, in terms of serving the community. So David Weekly Homes, we're pleased to present the towns at Pine Hollow, which you know as Beechwood Townhomes. And we're respectfully seeking your approval to rezone the property to accommodate a project that, as Linda has mentioned, the planning staff supports. It is transitional by definition. It adds diversity to the community's housing options, which is something we heard at plan commission. It's responsible and consistent with Avon's precedents, which I'll get to in a minute. It solves a problem the town knows it has, which is the pond. It's responsive to and cooperative with the sole remonstrator for the project, which is our neighbors at the Groves at Beechwood Farms. And it solves a problem that the Groves may not even realize that it has. So in summary, the towns at Pine Hollow is the best use for this very long undeveloped parcel. So here's an overview and the Eaton parcel is labeled Pine Hollow there at 10 acres and then the Trinity Homes parcel is separate. No, it is not a part of the rezone, but Mr. Eaton, the current property owner and his successors and assigns have the right to drain to the Trinity parcel. Mr. Eaton owned it originally. He granted it, sold it to Trinity specifically to develop the Groves at Beechwood Farms. And so he has the right to drain to it and he has no obligation to repair it or maintain it now or in the future. This is the concept plan. We are not obligated to commit to this concept plan at this time. And obviously, there are things that we have to learn when we get into design, but we are willing to commit to our plan substantially looking like this plan in the future. And I don't know how the pointer pointer works. But so as you can see, it's very, it's very efficient design. We work to preserve a lot of the trees. It's four public roads. There's 22% open space when the minimum standard for R four is 12%. Here's a private alley that the HOA will own and maintain. That is because these homes are rear loaded, alley loaded. That was at the request of planning staff and we like it too. It's a great look and it's a great aesthetic. Those homes will look substantially similar to this. These are on the ground in Denver. They are not in our market yet. And as was mentioned, they will start at $350,000 and go up from there. And then the rest of the subdivision or community is a more traditional front loaded two story townhomes, which will look substantially similar to this. And these are again, not in Indianapolis, but on the ground in Charlotte. So I won't go all over all of this with you. It's the history of the project. What I do want to just highlight is our interactions with the neighbors and when what we've done and what concerns we've heard and how we've handled them. So basically, we had a neighborhood meeting prior to plan commission. At that point, two people attended. We heard about traffic and we heard about the pond and we believed we had solutions for both of those, so we did nothing further and came to plan commission. At our first plan commission meeting in April, we heard more about use concerns, about rental concerns and safety concerns. And for that reason, the petition was continued. We then went and met with Nick at the HOA president, had a very good respectful conversation. Nick's been great to work with. We learned about density, that there were too many units. And then eventually we learned that the HOA, the Groves appreciates the density of the Glen Rock Springs project, even though it was a 100% rental project. And then at the May meeting, we talked more about parking, that there was not enough. And plan commission had their own comments and concerns. There was originally a motion for a favorable recommendation, which was not seconded, but then the unfavorable recommendation lost at a five two vote. So I won't go through their concerns in order, but at a high level and to the question of use, we know that the intent here is for this property to be property to be transitional. And so by definition, we have a C two zoning to the south and R three zoning to the west and an R two zoning to the north. So transitional needs to be something between those. C three has been there for years and years and has not worked. Our five would qualify as transitional and we could propose 240 units on our five zoning. We went with the R four because it's a townhome project. And in order to justify the property, the price of the property, we have to have some level of density to do so. 49 units of single family detached will not work on the property at the current asking price unless they are 100% rental. And we know that that is not acceptable. So with regards to density, I've shown a side by side comparison of the Village Place Townhomes, which is just north of the Costco that our friends at Lennar just had approved last year and I believe are under development now, side by side with towns at Pine Hollow. And again, I won't go through everything here, but they're substantially similar in the way that they're oriented towards US 36 with the outlots, the big box retail, the subject property and the detached large lot, single family residence to the north. So I do, I do want to make sure I just read this part so I'm efficient with my words. Hold tight. So we could have chosen to submit a concept plan that showed 100 units that conforms with the current R four zoning because 10 units per acre is allowed. Instead, before meeting with Linda, we studied Avon's past approvals as it relates to density for townhomes. And in good faith, we chose to submit what we believe is consistent with past approvals and affirms the town's preferences for townhome density. In other words, we could have put more density on the table with the intent of removing it later to give the appearance of cooperation and earn support, but instead, we demonstrated our cooperation by presenting the appropriate density from the start. And we respectfully ask that you consider that and that you would encourage this approach, not only for us, but for those that come behind us as developers. With regards to traffic and safety, we did our homework, consulted with our expert, talked to staff about signage, offered to purchase speed bumps and the Grove simply was not impressed, quote unquote. And the little subscripts next to those refer to documents that are in a separate packet that you have. There's no need to read all those, just wanted you to have them available. We heard about the improvements on US 36 at the light that are going to happen whether we are there or not. We did do a preliminary traffic study and have agreed to do a full traffic study as part of our primary plat approval, even though that's not required at this stage. With regards to safety, there's currently no sidewalk between the Groves and kid favorites like Chick-fil-A and Dairy Queen. We're building one. We're going to eliminate the strong possibility of heavier commercial traffic from this parcel in the future if it were to remain C three. You'll see a snapshot there on the right of this property in 2010 where the commercial portion is established in nearly identical to the way that it is today with nine commercial outlots and big box retail. The Grove is being developed, the public road was already there, the retail was already there when all these homes were being built. So as sympathetic as we are, and it's possible to be 100% sympathetic with the safety of the kids, it's also very difficult to ask taxpayers to plow and maintain a road, then limit their access to the road. And the same with sidewalks. So with regards to rentals, neither the town nor any builder can prohibit them, but the HOAs can. And since we are the originators of the HOA and will be on the original board, we can direct the towns at Pine Hollow to prohibit short term rentals, which we're willing to do, and put a cap on the number of nonowner occupants. We originally offered 25%. I went ahead and showed you some other percentages that we've seen in other municipalities around town. Happy to discuss that. Parking's pretty straightforward. We have it in abundance. There's four spots per unit because each unit has a two car garage. There's dedicated overflow parking. The town doesn't have to do anything because the HOA can prohibit parking on the internal streets and on Beechwood Center Drive through its covenants, conditions and restrictions. And that's what we are willing to commit to do. The drainage pond, although not relevant, and I understand that, I do want to state that we're in the we're in the market for a drainage pond because we have the right to drain to this one. And my understanding is that we have the right to ask Trinity Homes or the Groves at HOA to fix it now. What's unclear is which one of those parties is responsible. What is clear is that it was developed specifically for the Groves and their community has drained to it without maintaining it from its inception. And what's more clear than that is that Mr. Eaton and David Weekly Homes or anybody that buys the Eaton property has no responsibility for this pond whatsoever. So we could come before you and with this petition and we could ask Trinity Homes or the Groves to fix it. As was mentioned, we could design our own pond and leave the problem for somebody else to deal with. But we would like to be a solution both for the town and for the Groves. And so what we have done so far is we've paid extra for the assessment that's already been referred to here that the drainage board could do. Our friends at Banning have already done that for us and you have that report in front of you. We went ahead and got an estimate for that expense, which ranges anywhere from 190 to $225,000. Some of that, in my opinion, we would only spend if we wanted to bury XX dirt, but I think it's safe to say anything north of 175 is most likely required to bring this pond up to speed. So we offered to pay for that. We've already worked directly with with Trinity Homes, which is now Beazer. They were not even aware that they own this this parcel until we called them. That exchange is in your packet as well. I think they have since paid the taxes and there's a long term plan in place for this pond, which essentially our future HOA would own. And so then we've offered to pair it as part of our development and then we've offered to partner with the Groves for future maintenance of that pond, again, even though we have zero requirement to do so. I'm not going to read all this, but this is a summary of everything that we talked about with and to your point, Mr. Pope, the summary of everything we talked about with with the neighbors and with the plan commission. And I'll just highlight it by saying, and again, I don't know. And I'll just highlight it by saying, and again, I don't know how relevant this is, but it's important to our project. David Weekly Homes will fund and complete the necessary repairs and improvements to the detention pond. There's some contingencies there, but it's basically that we get our approvals and that we're able to do a deal with the Groves. Beazer Trinity Homes will convey the title of the land to our future HOA. We won't own it, but our future HOA will own it and we will be on that board. The towns at Pine Hollow will own the parcel. We'll buy it from Beazer. Again, contingent upon our ability to get an agreement. Our HOA will prohibit the short-term rentals, limit the number of investor-owned units, prohibit on-street parking in the development and on Beechwood Center Drive. Want to assure the council that our driveways are designed such that the cars will not overhang the sidewalks. So in other words, two in the garage, two in the driveway before anything touches the sidewalk, in addition to the overflow parking. And then to the point of the exit, it's not a path. It's actually a private alley that will be extended to Beechwood Center Drive to serve as the secondary means of egress and ingress. And my understanding is that we've actually discussed that concept already with the Town Fire Marshal and Public Works and that they do not take exception to it. So there's several other things there which can be discussed or I can answer in questions. But I would just summarize it by saying that this, in fact, in our strong opinion, is the best solution for this parcel. I do want to give Mr. Eaton, the property owner, his due. He's a neighbor. He's been trying to sell this forever. Mr. Eaton developed Beechwood Center. And it's, it's 3% tax rate, as we know. I added it up. There's $17 million worth of assessed value there right now. So if half a million of that in annual revenue goes to the state, I believe 24% of that goes directly to the town. And I believe 42% of that goes directly to the schools. So Mr. Eaton has been a great public citizen and done his part to contribute to the responsible growth of Avon. He's built the berm. He's not asked, he's not tried to get the residents of the Groves to stop putting their stuff on his property. He's being told that he can't sell his property to somebody because his user will continue to use the public streets. And he's being told that his buyer can't put rentals on the property, but the buyer still needs to match the density of the 100% rental home project that was last proposed for the site. So that's, it's hard for him to, to accept. And I understand. I'm sympathetic towards that as well. And then for our neighbors, we always just like to point out, we're not talking about townhome units. We're talking about people. So we're looking to build a community and for our friends at the Groves, like their kid's best friend or their next school teacher or their divorced son or daughter with their grandkids could live in next door. And I dare say there's probably a high possibility, if the neighborhood's so great, and I'm sure it is, that somebody might want to stay in the neighborhood and not have to take care of the yard anymore or exterior maintenance. It's the diversity of housing that you guys have asked for. And we're happy to do it here. This is a great spot for it. We did the right thing the first time because that's who we are. It's tempting, quite frankly, to wonder, should we have played the game that I mentioned before? We could have done no homework. We could have had no neighborhood meeting before plan commission. We could have proposed 100 units, knowing that we could pull it later to earn support. We could try to compel either Trinity Homes or the Groves to fix the pond right now because we have the right to drain to it, but we're not going to do that. So I would simply ask that you affirm and encourage the approach that we've taken. And I would ask that you, I did that last time too. I would just respectfully ask that you support, you offer your support to rezone the property to an R4 classification to accommodate our townhome development. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions you have. I'm also here with Steve Brehab with Banning, who's happy to answer any technical questions. And I'm also joined by Lindsay Phipps, our land entitlements manager. Thank you for your time.
While you're there, item number seven in your summary of solutions and commitments.
Yes.
You're not going to allow any street parking within your development?
There's, there's, let me just go back to the slide. The answer is yes. So we have the four units per, or the four spaces per unit. And then we have some excess parking here. And we may be able to find another spot or two to add some more excess overflow parking. But that will be sufficient.
What happens if the northwest corner is having a birthday party? All those people are going to have to park down there and walk there?
Yes, it's not that far.
I say that because in my subdivision, my neighbor had a party this weekend and both sides of the road was lined with traffic.
Right.
And I cannot imagine those people having to walk other than from in front of the house to, you know, maybe a couple houses away.
Right.
So I don't, that to me doesn't make sense, but.
I'm happy to remove the restriction that they park on the road.
I know it's part of the rezoning, Dan, but he just offered these commitments. So that's why I asked them. Go back to the egress-ingress at the northeast corner. So is that not going to be an emergency? That will be egress-ingress 24/7?
Do you want to? We've talked about this, but.
Yeah. Steve Brehab, Banning Engineering. It could be, it could be open 24/7. It's, it's an alley. It's not a path. We'd originally talked about it being gated and for emergency use only, but there was a lot of consternation about that. So we felt like it was better that it just be open and available for use 24/7. It's really no different in width than a private driveway coming out. And it actually is. It's a private alley. But it would be no different than somebody's driveway from their home coming out onto the roadway.
By labeling it an alley, is the width different than labeling it as a street?
The width of alleys in the, in the town standards are a minimum of 20 feet of right-of-way. But for fire code, it has to be a minimum of 20 feet in pavement. So this would be 20 feet of pavement with two-foot curb and gutter on each side. So technically, the drivable surface would be 24 feet in width. We reviewed that with the fire marshal and he took no exception with that because of the width. The only concern was making sure that it was built to the same standard as roadway with regards to pavement thickness, which we will do.
So it'll be built to the same standard as a road?
Correct. Correct.
While you're on the topic of that, we have had some difficulties dealing with older neighborhoods that have had private roadways and 10, 15, 20 years down the road needing maintenance. How will you execute maintenance on this 10, 15, 20 years ago? How will the HOA ensure that maintenance will be able to keep this private alley up to safe standards?
So with regards to the private alley, it'll be our responsibility when we set up the HOA and we take it very seriously, to establish a budget that will have reserves and a plan for both routine maintenance and then, you know, it'll need to be repaved on, on a scheduled basis.
Yes, it will. And that's expensive.
Yes.
You're saying you will, you will create a budget. This will be a part of the initial HOA budget. Some of the solutions we've seen is a special, special charge and these are incredibly expensive things to maintain.
We try to avoid special assessments if at all possible. But to your point, it, the key is at the very beginning of the development, when we're still responsible for the HOA, to, to build it correctly and then set it up in such a way. If you maintain it in an ongoing basis, it'll help defer that expense. It won't be as expensive as if you just let it go, you know, until it absolutely needs to be repaired. So I can't give you the numbers. I can just tell you that it's important to us because then we hand it off to our homeowners that that is in the budget. If push comes to shove and we don't do our math right, there might need to be a special assessment. That's not uncommon for townhome developments, but we try to avoid that by planning appropriately on the front end.
So there's, there's not really a way to ensure that 20 years down the road, we don't have a unsafe, indist repair road. So then the question becomes, why, why is this private and not public? And I don't know if that's a question for you or our staff.
I can tell you the other townhome project that we recently did in the town of Avon, Silver Springs, had a mix of single-family residential and townhomes as well. And it was the town's preference that the alleys within the townhome area be private.
One of the requirements that I put on was that they had to put their record on it before acceptance, which helps with maintenance. So it's almost they maintain that, that everyone's going to last well over the 20 years. After the other seven years, they put it down. And it's a nominal fee. We look at annualized cost to maintain our own roads. We're trying to help them by setting them up for success by making them go out in the first application before acceptance of the entire subdivision, even though we're not taking, we're not accepting that road. We're beginning to put it down. And so that establishes a maintenance program for them.
Thanks, Steve. Thank you.
I know when we were talking about the neighborhood over on 900 recently, remember they added the butterfly garden? And then their second access was going to be those removable bollards? So my question is, that north part, do we want that to really be an entrance and an exit? Or do we want it to be more of a path, the same way with the removable bollards for emergency equipment? I just remember that conversation just a month ago when we were approving that neighborhood. Any comments?
While you're, while you're thinking about that, I will add that this is just a concept plan. So we haven't really dug into next-level details. But both for safety reasons and aesthetic reasons, it often makes sense to put a boulevard entrance at the main entrance of a community, which would also then alleviate, I think, a lot of the, the flow concerns. So our original intent was the bollards, to Ms. Loudon's point. But we're, you know, we're willing to defer to this, to the preferences of the council and your staff.
You know, another thing was, you know, the concern was parking or parking on Beechwood Drive. And I'm just curious and just going to throw it out. If we put that restriction on something, does that follow Beechwood Drive all the way through Beechwood Farms as well? No parking on the street?
So what they've proposed is to put in their covenants and restrictions that these residents can't park there or the internal streets. It's not, the town's not going to put up signs to prohibit parking. So it's not going to change anything. And if you wanted to go park there, you could. And a non-resident of this community could park on the internal streets. It's, the parking requirements they're talking about is only for who would be subject to the covenants.
Well, do we want to go through the five criteria again? Or are there more questions now that the developer has spoken?
My only question is, do we feel as if the comments that were made by the residents have been answered either by the petitioner through his presentation? And we talked about, there's talk about density. We talked about traffic. There's talk about the intersection at 36. There's talk about cut-through traffic. Another one was density. And as they indicated their density, they could go up to 10 units per acre or be 100 units. So they're already 24 less than that. Price point, I don't know about that. I don't drive that. So I just want to make certain that we addressed their issues.
Uh huh. In my opinion, Steve addressed the developments that are going to be made at the intersection. And we have addressed the parking on Beechwood Drive based on the petitioner's comments and putting the restriction in there. Speeding, I have a note here. Someone brought up speeding. You know, that's the way we have police. You know, the developer can't control that. A homeowner can't control that. The pond out of compliance, I think that, you know, on the advice of our attorney, we're leaving that out of it. But I think that the developer answered some questions for the, for the demonstrations. And again, we can't stop people cutting through neighborhoods. All of our neighborhoods connect and that's for fire and safety and more than one way in and out. So we can't stop someone from cutting through a neighborhood. And then someone commented about the type of clientele being the people that would fight at Texas Roadhouse. And I think that was ridiculous. You know, you don't know. That's, you know, we can't say that. These are single-family homes. They start at $330,000. And I think you just hope that someone moving into a community that has a price point at that rate is disciplined enough to not cause that type of havoc.
This is, Dawn, thank you for kind of running through the five criteria. And this is completely separate from that, but I was just reminded through your presentation. This is for the petitioner. You have some ambiguity in your presentation. Can you provide some clarification? And I think my attorney would require that I don't start asking too many questions about this, but it is on page 17 and it is included as number five on your summary of commitments on page 19. You've got it, a few numbers listed and again, some ambiguity mentioned on the commitments that you have offered.
With regards to the rentals?
Yes, sir.
Yes. So our, our commitment to the Groves at Beechwood Farms, who's also trying to work through their own HOA to get rental restrictions. They have none currently. We offered 25%, so that would limit the units to, that would limit it to 19 units. If you're asking for, if we're willing to limit them even more, yeah, we would be. And if you would like me to go ahead and, you know, basically negotiate against myself, I think I can go down to 10 units. 15% is a fraction. 10% is a fraction. 10 units is right in between those two. We'd be happy to direct our HOA, because again, David Weekly and the town can't do it. But we would be happy to direct our HOA to limit the number of non-owner occupants to 10 in this community.
I don't think we can ask that. I think we start getting into a major shaded area. So I am hearing you commit to that.
That's correct.
Okay.
And again, Mr. Taylor, all these things that they're talking about in here, these references, commitments, conceptual ideas, all this goes back to the plan commission once the rezone is done. So they can then go back and put commitments to it? Or do we need to do all these commitments now?
You would need to do that. If commitments are being offered, you want them, then you should do it with a motion to approve. Of course, if it's a motion deny, you don't need to worry about commitments. But yeah, you need to consider those that are on that sheet that you think would be crucial to a motion supporting the rezone. And I think that they seem to be integral to that discussion. So a motion to deny would not need to reference those commitments, but a motion for approval would definitely need to because.
would definitely need to because this approval, an approval on a rezone or a decision on a rezone is discretionary, whereas on a plat approval in the development zone, which are the next steps at the Plan Commission, those are non-discretionary approvals. And so, you, you know, you may not get these commitments at a future stage of the development
Back to the five criteria, when we talk about most desirable, I think that, you know, the transition from commercial to single-family residential, I think that a multi-family situation, or in this case specifically townhomes, would be more appealing for me personally, if I lived in Beechwood Farms, rather than looking at the backside of a commercial where you see dumpsters, cars, overflow storage. I'm thinking of the people that are even there in that, in that commercial area right now. You have trucks making deliveries at different hours, light, you know, lighting, things like that. I would think that for me, transitional type use makes more sense because they're going to be more alike or more in line of a residential property. So, that's just one more point, one more note I had here under the most desirable Anyone else?
A question for the petitioner, just because I don't see it here mentioned, but are you willing to commit to no more than 76 units on the property? Let's make sure we cap the density...
Yes.
Any further questions for planning and building or for the petitioner? If not, we'll move forward with, or we will entertain a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve the zoning to R4 for Pine Hollow as presented with a cap of the 76 townhomes, as well as the summary of the solutions and commitments that were printed, the 15 here. And in addition to those... I'm reading through here. I'm just making sure that they, in this 15, it is written that they would do the traffic study at the preliminary platting process. Well, I'm going to go ahead and add that one because I don't see it here at quick glance.
Could you also add the commitments in the staff report from the Plan Commission?
And the commitment from the staff report and the Plan Commission.
For the record, could you say what that is? I don't even know where you're from myself.
Sure. The staff recommended approval subject to, number one, the future preliminary plat shall be generally consistent with the conceptual plan submitted with the rezoning petition. A recreation impact view shall be assessed at the time of permitting for each lot and the following uses shall be prohibited, apartment building small and apartment building large. And then I also had the additional prohibited uses that the Plan Commission talked about. I don't know if you want those included. Cemetery, recycling facility, hospital, utility, mass transit facility, live-work units, upper-story residential. Plan Commission also added that the proposed emergency access be required, which I believe is in their 15, and that a traffic study be part of, pleaded with the plat, which I believe is in their 15. And now I've added rental restrictions limited to 10 units and no more than 76 units total. That's everything I have.
Linda, in the future, can you make, can we have those from the Planning Commission included in our packet?
I apologize. I thought it was set out with the packet.
Thank you.
I'll make sure.
Thank you, thank you.
Can we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Julie, roll call please.
Dawn Loudon?
Four.
Jason Puckett?
Against.
Robert Pope?
For.
Greg Zuzen?
Against.
Bill Hollin?
Dan, legal counsel report.
I will have your next meeting a summary of new laws and I promised to put something in writing, so I don't have to read it all to you, but I'll hit the high points for you next meeting.
Thank you. Second, public comment. The public can comment on agendas on the agenda that are not part of a public hearing or a specific matter within the council's jurisdiction. Is there anyone that would like to come forward? Council comment? Any council comments?
I have none.
Council calendar?
Yes, just a reminder, your next meeting is June 26th at 7:00 PM. And as we discussed earlier at our work session, we will be doing executive session at 5:00 PM and a work session at 5:30 PM. And we'll get those meetings posted and we'll send you guys meeting invites.
Okay, thank you. Meeting adjourned.